Notice of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, March 12th, 2020, beginning at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall, located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting is called to order. I would like to start the meeting by stating that we have a request to combine two adjacent tracts of land into one unrestricted reserve at 501 South Friendswood Drive. Many have commented the parsonage property that's on our consent agenda this evening. In this meeting, we will only consider the combination of the two tracts. If this property is ultimately developed for commercial reasons, a site plan will, with significantly more details on the development, will be submitted to the commission for its review and possible approval in a future meeting. Just wanted to make that clear to everybody that's here tonight. We will now receive any communications from the public or committee liaisons to the commission. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Please note that public comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and the commission's vice chair, Richard Sassen, will be the timekeeper. Is there, and I do have, before opening it up to anybody else, just in case, I do have cards this evening, and I'll go ahead and start with Mr. Hickey. If you could please stand at the podium, and I already said your name, but if you'd go ahead, please.
Michael Hickey.
There you go.
How y'all doing?
Mr. Hickey, before we get started, just one of the warnings here. You have five minutes. I'll be hanging, holding up a card at four with one minute left, just to kind of let you know to wrap up, and then this will say that you're running out of time.
Very good.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Obviously not contesting the two lots being put together, but a quick intro, because as I am going to talk, you may be thinking in your mind, formulating some answers that you want to give me, but I think I want to tell you that I think I pretty well know the drill. I know this is a property right state. Been a real estate broker since '77. I've been a contractor since '78. I've lived here in this town for 43 years. I've owned nine pieces of property in this town. They're all built out, and they're all completely developed. I think I'm probably in excess of $2 million worth of work for the Friendswood schools and for churches in this town and whatnot. So, I kind of know the drill, and I understand that the lane that y'all have to stay in. I know that we're heavily residential. I am not against commercial. I know that we need to try and balance a little bit more. We do need some more commercial to balance out our residential. I am good with all of that. After having said that, okay, I understand that, I really want to talk, and I really want to speak with my heart. I saw the pencil line drawing for what the developer is planning to put on, we'll call it the parsonage lot right there, and I thought when I saw it, wow, that's a landmark that's going down, but that's okay. There is progress. That does happen. Been some wonderful families that have lived in that house, and I thought, you know, that this is a, and a great piece of property because on the east Spreading Oaks side and on the Sunny View side and on the back, we've got some oak trees there. Alton Todd is actually going through this with me right now, looking up. He's going to compute and figure how old those oak trees are with the historical data that he has, and they're on the perimeter of the property. So I thought this is going to be wonderful because whoever's, it looked like a single strip center, parking lot in the front, parking lot in the back, and I said, he can really make a pretty, pretty place there. But I clearly understand that it is fully his intention to completely clear-cut the entire lot and remove everything from there. I'm sure he wants to do this because he thinks that's going to be the best business approach for what he's going to put there. So, my hope is to begin the discussion, and as I told some people, I kind of drew the black bean. There must be 30, 40 people wanted to come. I said, there's really no need to at this point, but let's just go ahead and open the conversation. We would like someone that could actually explain to him what Friendswood Drive and what that part of town means to this community. It would endear him to this community, and I think that he would believe this is a much better business move on my part if I save these trees out on the perimeter. I mean, it is, it is the epicenter of town. That is really, I think most people have been here like me for 43 years, believe that to really kind of be the heart of the town. It's, to me, it's, it's the soul of the town, it's the spirit of it. So, you know, my hope is that P&amp;Z, because I've looked at the plot, I don't, or excuse me, I've looked at the plan that he's penciled out, I don't really know if that's exactly what he's going to come up with, but it looks to me like there's plenty of parking. But if we gave up a parking spot, if we gave up two parking spots and we could keep those perimeter trees there, it would be, it would change the look. It will change the look of this town if that place is clear-cut. I only ask you, next time you drive down through there, just imagine a single strip center, parking in the front, parking in the back, and that's it. We lose all that balance right there with the church. So, really, my position is, the position of my peers and people that have asked me to come and do this, is we would like the stewards of this town, P&amp;Z, council, mayor's office, economic development, whoever, to actually be able to reach out to this fellow and let him know, hopefully, what we're thinking and what we would like to do. I think that if we lose, he clear-cuts it, he builds his center, there will be an outcry. There won't be much we can do about it, but at least we would be able to tell our friends, our neighbors, our families, we tried. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Fleta Hill.
My name is Fleta Hill.
Again, Mrs. Hill, the yellow says one minute left, and then the red means you're out of time.
Okay.
And you have five minutes.
Thank you so much. Well, I've never done this before, I don't think. I'm not good at public speaking. I can only talk with my heart. That's all I have. Friendswood has been my home since 1951. I came in the seventh grade with my mother. I was raised here. This town, I cannot tell you what it means to me. Everything about it, believe it or not, even those trees we're talking about are so special. I am a Quaker. I joined the church when I came here. It was the only church here at the time, but later I did have choices. Other churches came in, but that was the parsonage that I grew up with. Went to parties there when our minister and his wife, and he raised four children in that house. And I thought it was the most beautiful Austin stone. I'd never seen Austin stone before, and I thought it was the most beautiful building material I'd ever seen. But the whole thing is the trees. Friendswood, it was, that's how it got its name, if you think about it. The Quakers founded it. They're known as Friends, of course. I think everybody knows that, and that's where we got the Friends, and the wood was because of our oak trees. That's what it means. That's what's on our symbol. That's what went to outer space. Our flag with our oak tree. Those trees, the community will never be the same if we start destroying our oak trees. Quakers, I hate to say, weren't big on fancy buildings and anything, so we had very few historical buildings to save. We have saved one or two, and that's about it. And, but our trees are critical to our community. They mean the heart and soul. Look at League City. They have the same big trees over there. I even know some of the family that planted those. It is the difference between just a barren land, you might as well go to Houston on whatever, Long Drive or whatever, and just have a bunch of tacky buildings, if you will. Not that we have tacky buildings, but if you don't have any trees or green vegetation, it becomes concrete and buildings. That does not speak for Friendswood. I think we, of all people, I have a friend that was on the drainage commission in Pearland, and he said, I was fussing about the creek when it was flooding my house, and he said, well, you need to move to Pearland. And I said, I cannot move to Pearland. He said, why not? I said, you don't have any trees. He said, you can plant some. I said, no. These trees have been here for over 100 years, I think, and we can't, we can't, we can't replicate that by just going out and planting a little pine sapling or whatever they stick up there. So with all of my heart, I would ask you to protect our trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill.
Thank you. My name's Brady Mora. I've lived in Friendswood my whole life. And this tree up front, this building was built in 1995, the plaque says, so the tree up front's about 30 years old. That's a live oak tree. And the one down a little further is older. It's much bigger. I don't know how old it is, but it's probably close to 100 years old. And, yeah, I'm here to talk about the trees. There's a bunch of trees at 501 South Friendswood Drive, but there's five trees that are older than the rest. Most of them around 50 or 60 years old, and they're, in my mind, just my opinion, they're expendable. And this guy's wanting to develop the property, that doesn't make him a bad guy, it just means that he's, you know, between a rock and a hard place, and I think the city needs to meet him halfway. It's going to have to be give and take, or the trees won't get saved. If I had my way, I'd like to see him save all five trees, but that may not be feasible. So maybe we can meet him halfway and make some kind of incentive to encourage him to understand, we don't want him to lose his shirt, but we certainly don't want to lose our trees. You know, if he can save one or two, I'd call that a win. You know, if he can save all five, that's super. I think the park would be real nice there, but this guy's not in the park business. He's a developer, and so we have to respect that. So, I hope that we can work it out. I think that if we can send a man to the moon, we can figure out a way to save, you know, a couple of oak trees. How important are they? Well, they're important to me. I don't know how important they are to you, but these trees don't belong to me, and I don't really think they belong to any of us. They really belong to our children. So, we've got a job to do. There's a hole in the dam, and if we don't plug it, there's going to be a flood. I mean, there's, another way to look at it is there's a train headed this way, and there's going to be a train crash in the way of these trees being destroyed. We've got time to come up with solutions. I think a think tank needs to be put together, or some ideas, you know, free flow of ideas, including the developer, because anything that's said that doesn't include the developer is destined to fail. But if he'll meet us halfway, I think maybe we can work through this. And I just appreciate the job y'all are doing. My dad sat up there at one time, and he had a little, a few run-ins with some sign ordinances, if I recall straight, but today it's trees, tomorrow it'll be something else, so I know y'all got a tough job to do, and I think y'all can handle it. I would like to help in any way that I can, and I'm not alone. I think there's, not a person in Friendswood wants to see those trees gone. There's a lot of trees down there, and if you were to remove all the trees except for the five live oak trees, and then get up in there and trim those trees, I think you'd see what I see. What I see down there is a diamond in the rough. It's an absolute priceless jewel. And if you go to Columbus, Texas, or Shiner, or any small town in Texas, you'll see squares with pecan trees, stately majestic live oak trees. Trees make the town. It's not the building, it's the people. But your first appearance is, you know, they call it curb appeal, and that's your first impression is these trees. And if you want to know what it'll look like without the trees, it's hard to visualize, but I'm afraid if we don't do something, we're going to find out. So, let's all pull together and make it happen. We've done it before. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Dave Smith.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dave. You know the drill. You have five minutes, and you have a one-minute warning on the yellow card.
Hope I don't take that long.
Okay.
So, all of the folks that you have heard from so far are my friends, and I love trees, too. I have beautiful oak trees that are about 25 to 30 years old at my home, and I've owned property in the area where I've had oak trees that have been 50 to 60 years old. Went to great expense to keep those trees in good condition, alive, so I do appreciate them very much, and I understand what they mean to us as a community. But my perspective on this issue is one of process and property rights. And with all respect to Brady, there is someone that does own those trees, and that's the property owner. There is a time and a place for us to talk with you and about our council and other city leaders about what our ordinances are, or what our processes are, and unfortunately, when a specific piece of property is being developed, that isn't the best time for us to talk to you about it. You've heard some great ideas tonight about how we might go about discussing these issues, and I look forward to those potential processes being put in place. But I also know that years have been spent developing the ordinances that we already have in place, and that a property owner like this at this stage of the game is probably already vested in their property rights, invested in the process, and it is not possible at this point in time for us to backtrack and expect them to do something different after they've already purchased and already started developing. So, it's a tough issue, one of where do we draw the line when it comes to someone else's property for the benefit of the community? What rights do we take away from them associated with what we all want to enjoy on someone else's property? The time to secure those trees or that property is well before someone is trying to develop or to do something with it. So I want to encourage my friends and my fellow citizens to become involved in the process of discussing about what historical value or community value trees might have to us in a more comprehensive manner rather than on an individual development. I know it's a hot button because these pieces of property are currently changing hands or under development on Main Street. Thank goodness they are. Many have worked long and hard to try to make those things happen to diversify our community, and hopefully those developers will pay attention to what's important to Friendswood. But I do believe our ordinances, as they are right now, reflect the community's desires and wishes about what they want done, and trees are included in that. Thank you for letting me take a few minutes and give you my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Sassen. Next is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
Mr. Chairman. I would like to move that we move the item A, the Rothschild Moore final plat, to, for additional discussion. There's many people here that are interested in it, and we should just discuss it a little bit before we vote on it. Please. So do I need to put a motion together for, to discuss it?
Yeah, just a motion to hold that consent item A for discussion.
I so move.
Is there a second? Okay. So we will, that's a great idea. Perfect. Okay, we have a motion in a second to separately discuss the Rothschild Moore final plat property. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous? What might make the most sense is to go ahead and take care of our other consent agenda item. Is there a motion to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission February 13th, 2020 regular meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Dick Beatra.
Just slightly. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous? Okay. So that makes our next item is the Rothschild Moore final plat. So is there, I guess we will need, is there a motion?
Do we need a motion? I thought we just were going to discuss it, or a motion to, a motion to approve?
Yes.
Sorry. I move that we approve it. Approve the Rothschild Moore final plat.
Okay. Second? Is there a second? Okay. Aubrey, is there any additional staff information on this particular item?
No, sir. It's just, like I said, the property was in two separate tracts, and so the plat is just to clean those up and combine them into one tract, since they're under one ownership. The only, we do need to include, there is one staff comment to insert a row, a missing row into the regulation matrix. It's redlined on the backup material, so we do need to amend that motion to include that one staff comment.
So can I change my motion to say a motion to approve with staff comments?
Sure.
And I still need a second.
Okay, so, and I don't see the applicant here tonight, so is there, is there discussion? Lisa, I'll start, actually, with you.
So what, the proposed plat is to combine two tracts into a single unrestricted reserve. So, can you explain exactly what it means, since this has so much interest, to be an unrestricted reserve?
So it's designated for, it's unrestricted because it's zoned, it's a commercially zoned piece of property. If it was restrict, we usually restrict, if a property is specific to detention or drainage and different things like that, then they're restricted. But this is, it's a commercially zoned piece of property, so it's an unrestricted reserve.
Anything else? Rich?
Yeah, I just, so today is not the controversial vote that is probably coming up in all of our futures, but today is just bookkeeping to get this before eventually we'll see a site plan. I just wanted to kind of quiz you a little bit, Aubrey, or let you talk a little bit about some discussions you probably had already. I think some people here are interested, some of the things they were asking about, I think the city has already been doing, trying to find a middle ground on this. I don't think anything's been decided, but I do know that you and others have been putting out a lot of effort to try to see if there is a middle ground that can be a win-win for the property and the city at the same time.
Yes, the property is zoned downtown district. It will be subject to the same regulations that all the other downtown properties are subject to. The commission does, you know, the, our ordinances do allow for some leeway in different areas, and so I have been in communication with the engineer that's working on the project and did let them know the two most important trees to the community, and, you know, let them know that if they could save those two trees, the community would greatly appreciate it, and that we would work with them however we could to make that happen.
I know one of the thoughts that had been is those trees might be in what's proposed to be a parking lot, and we might be able to concede some leeway on the required parking spaces, and looking for, like I said, some kind of win-win. So I applaud your efforts. I think there's a lot of people in this town that would like to help if they can, and so we'll see where that goes. I hope that is successful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Brett.
I wish the applicant was here tonight so he could hear all the great comments that were spoken tonight. Very well said, and appreciate y'all coming, and I really wish the developer heard everything you said, but he didn't, so maybe he'll watch it on YouTube. In regards to the trees, you know, I typically was side on the side of the developer. I'm very strong on property rights, but sometimes trees deserve special recognition. You know, I found myself in the exact same position 25 years ago when I developed the Hundred Professional Park. There was a big oak tree right in the middle of our property, and four big pine trees. At that time, I went before P&amp;Z and I asked for variances. I shift one building 10 feet into the setback lines. P&amp;Z gave me that variance, and then I designed a huge landscape island around one oak tree. It ate up a lot of parking, but I got a variance from P&amp;Z to adopt me to have reduced parking. That oak tree's still there 25 years later, so, so there is, there is a common ground, a middle ground we got to find, and at the same time, we got to protect the developer's rights. That's his land, his trees, he has every right to make money on that land, but those trees up front are very, very special, and I think if we just work on the parking requirements, if you can share, I think you already did, if you can share with the civil engineer, look, we'll work with you on the parking requirements or even setbacks, and I think we can find a way.
Dick? Okay.
I do have one more comment. So are there other areas that we can work with them, such as, like sidewalks? I'm sure those trees that are on the perimeter are going to hit where our sidewalk is. Maybe make concessions on sidewalk width or how it goes around it, or maybe no sidewalks there at all, like it is on the other side of the church? And then, other concern that I had was those trees have wide drip lines, I think it's called, and probably need some kind of semi-permeable pavers instead of asphalt and things like that. And if there's any way we can work with them through the city to, I don't know, share some of that cost or something, because I remember sitting under those trees watching the Fourth of July parade.
We will, when they submit the site plan, I mean, like I said, we will, we'll definitely do all that we can.
So most of my questions or comments got said already, but going back to your comment about the site plan, the next, one of the next steps or what will come before the commission next would include the site plan? Is that correct?
Yes.
And that would have details showing what trees, what new trees, what the layout of the building, that sort of thing?
Yeah, the site plan that would come to you would have the building elevations, the site plan, landscape plan, and photometric survey.
Is he getting a timetable on that?
No, sir.
Okay, no, thank, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a, it's a, it's a very important topic for a lot of people. Okay, with that, we have a motion in a second. All in, all in favor? Shows to be unanimous? Next on our agenda are the action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules of Procedure R 2019-15, all action of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. Our only action item tonight is consideration and possible action regarding the TBH Holding Group LLC Preliminary Plat locating at 104 Whispering Pines Avenue. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve with staff comments?
Good job.
Is there a second?
Second.
Aubrey, do you have a staff summary, please?
Yes, sir. So this is the property at 104 Whispering Pines, which is the former Reach Church property. TBH Holdings acquired the property. They are occupying the building that's on the property now. They kind of rehabbed the building and moved some of their offices in there. This is the plat to subdivide that tract into two lots. They're going to build two buildings. They, as far as lot size and everything, they meet the requirements. There are a few remaining staff comments on it, and this preliminary plat might look a little messy, but we're working with the owner on this property because it was made to be a mess years and years ago. There used to, I guess originally Friendswood Link Road made a right-hand turn at this property, and so there was a curve at the turn. That property was abandoned by the city and given to Mr. Utley, who owned the property at the time, but when the meets and bounds description was written and that right-of-way was abandoned, it wasn't written correctly, so there was a, there's a weird shape that was left out of the abandonment, and so that came to light. So we're working with him to clean that up. Basically, the city's going to give him the rest of that property so that we can plat it correctly. He's also plat, or dedicating an additional 20 feet of right-of-way for Friendswood Link Road that will help line that property up with all the other properties down Link Road.
And I don't see the applicant here tonight. So on discussion, and I'll just continue the same pattern, Lisa?
This looks like it needs to happen to me. It's, makes everything tidy.
And it will be cleaner on the final plat. We just wanted to keep the process moving forward, and the final plat will be very We just wanted to keep the process moving forward, and the final Platt will be very
Rich?
So, Aubrey, this is downtown district?
Yes.
And you're just, basically, we're doing what the landowner wants, or reviewing that, but at the same time, you're getting a lot of past sins cleaned up and getting all of this thing to look the way it should have?
Yes, sir.
And so, yeah, that's fine. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Brett?
No comments.
Dick? And I have no, no questions. No further discussion? All those in favor? Shows to be unanimous? All right. Okay, next item is consideration and possible action regarding future planning and zoning commission dates. Aubrey?
Our next regular meeting is Thursday, March 26, and the meeting after that would be Thursday, April 9.
Next on our agenda are communication, including commissioner updates. Do any commissioners have anything that they wish to communicate? Suggestions for future agenda items? Subcommittee updates? General comments or updates from liaison assignments?
I liaise on with Keep Friendswood Beautiful, and at our last meeting, we did have a citizen come and, and ask KFB what they, what KFB could do to save the trees at 501, which is the first time that I, I heard about it. So, it's, that concern has gone far and wide throughout all of the commissions and areas of Friendswood government. Just letting you know that.
Great. Rich?
Yeah, I went to the FD-EDC meeting on a week and a half ago. They are working on their sidewalk plan. They're a little bit hamstrung, because the, they're working with the text dot, which is going to be, has, has, does not allow the sidewalk that they actually preferred with pavers. It doesn't meet the ADA requirement, so they're working to see what can work that still meets the aesthetic desires of the city. And so, I think it's gonna be a joint work deal, but they're kinda stuck a little bit, because they don't have complete control over where they wanna go with that. The DOT sidewalks they're expecting would be put in by a year from now, I guess, March of '21, so the process takes a little while. The text dot plan they're proposing will probably be put together by the end of this year, 2020. And they're continuing to accrue money. They have 1.2 million in the bank to do something, and they're trying to be careful with that and with stewards to figure out what the right thing is to go forward with that. They seem to be putting in about $45,000 a month, although that may go up now the Chick-fil-A's open, so we'll see.
Anything on the ordinance subcommittee note?
So, yeah, the ordinance subcommittee met an hour ago. Becky is trying to get us in line. We've got a couple of things working that we're trying to progress forward, but we're gonna bring them to the city council and see if they have appetite for some of the things that the staff is struggling with, with the current rules, trying to streamline some things to make them work a little bit better.
Great, thank you. Brett?
Yeah, I'm gonna go back to the trees for a second. I really encourage the group of citizens are getting together to reach out to the developer in a positive manner. There's only so much P&amp;Z or city staff or city council can do in this regard. We're legally bound, we only do so much. So, I think the best approach is to approach the developer and show them that those trees provide real economic value to his property, and it'd be his best interest financially to keep them. So, I think that's the best approach. In regards to the planning subcommittee, we're finally gonna meet next Tuesday, Aubrey? Yeah, March 17. So, we're gonna be back on track, start the process on the comprehensive plan.
All right, thank you. Dick?
I don't have anything. ZBOA hasn't had any activities.
No, I guess the only thing, comment I would have is I really appreciate everybody coming tonight and speaking. Those of you that spoke, we really appreciate hearing from you, and thank you for attending tonight. It's a very important subject. So, with that, I'll move on to Sally. You're stepping in this evening as our council liaison alternate.
Yes, Councilmember Hanks is out of the state, not the country. It's always a pleasure to be with y'all, and I just wanna say, and I know I've said it many times, but I really appreciate the hard work that you do. I appreciate the recommendations that you bring forward, and I know there's a lot of due diligence that goes along with that. I know that y'all are kinda like council, you're on the front line, and appreciate the folks that have come out to speak their minds, and trees are certainly important to Friendswood, and I respect that, and I respect y'all's opinion on this. So, thank you very much for the good work that you're doing. It's appreciated.
Thank you, Sally. Next are staff updates. Aubrey?
Yes, sir. The February DRC report was in your backup material. We only had two items on that. Go over them real quick. Oh, three. So, Rustica Bakery and Cafe is looking to occupy the Cake Lady Building. So, we met with them. 209 Laurel Drive. Tim Leesack, owner of ProServe, came in and is looking at trying to buy the property next to him to build another building that is zoned downtown district, but not on the main street. And then, 528 and Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, the intersection, the, I guess, northwest corner across the street from Chevron. There's a tract there that's been sold, and CVS Pharmacy is looking at building, a building there. So, that'll be an improvement to that intersection and kinda kick off the Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, or maybe Friendswood Parkway, so that we can be like our neighbors.
Have they already bought that, or is that something they're thinking about?
Yes, they have. They own the property.
Okay, so that looks like it's gonna happen.
Yes.
Okay.
And then, as far as other council items, there was a citywide, the citywide traffic study that was hired, that we hired to complete the traffic study on the city, was presented at the March city council meeting. So, if you are interested in that, wanna go back, it was a good presentation. Might be some recommendations in there that we can consider during our major thoroughfare plan updates and things like that. So, we'll definitely get a copy of that. It's an important topic for us as far as new development and that kinda thing. Public hearings and first readings, public hearings were held and first readings approved for ZBOA amendments and the permitted use table changes that we proposed, and it was approved on first reading. Second reading will be next month. And then, also, John Scott and Sally Branson are unopposed for the council seat, so they will be reelected for three-year terms.
Great. Anything else? Becky, anything else?
Go ahead.
Becky? Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna share, there's no general election, but there's still a special election. So, everyone vote.
Becky, anything?
Yes.
Okay. Mary Kay, anything else she'd like to add?
No.
Okay. With that, the March 12, 2020 Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting is now adjourned.